Our office space is actually in a maintenance bay. So that would be moving the office space out and opening that back up so we could handle more vehicles in there.
Okay.
So that's something that could be in the future. Right now, we're, we're making do.
So you could do without that one?
Yes.
Right now, okay.
And the patch truck, I've actually been researching online and then also really delving into the budget in previous years, not understanding that the MVH funds initially, I didn't understand that that was not something that the state just gives you a set amount of money and then that's what you have. So I've been researching the, the patch trucks and I might have no problem pulling that out of the host and then putting that into a request for MVH funds later.
There's three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Well, there's not, there will not be sufficient funds in MVH to pay for both, but exactly what he said, he could purchase equipment out of there.
And this, this is a brand-new truck at a hundred and sixty-five. I have been researching used trucks, and I'll give that all in the presentation is exactly what I'm looking for, but, but that was, like I said, I apologize, that was very green when, when we were trying to go through all this stuff.
And you've done a good job, Andy, you really have, for being thrown into the fire.
You get one pass and that's, that's all right, you're, you're fine, you're fine. Mark, do we still have empty office space upstairs?
We, what do we, Barry, if probation takes three rooms, well, we still have one room left, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is it a big room with Andy fitting up? It's good size, all right.
If those are pants, it's not going to fit me.
Wasn't talking pants size.
Well, and for that, it would be, it wouldn't be just an office for myself or assistant, it's break room, kitchen, that whole area encompasses where the, where the maintenance bay is. So that's where I was looking at a, a mobile trailer, so you aren't building a whole building, just something small enough that where you can run some utilities to it. And that way, we still have a place, but then we're opening up another maintenance bay. So that was the idea on that part. But like I said, we're making do now, I'm, I'm thinking there should be no issue with getting through another year, so.
Okay.
If we brought Andy up here, the boys would be lost. They'd be just wandering around.
But that's something that, along these lines of why we're talking about all of this, that Mark and Will and I have looked at is can we move departments around and can we like put the fire department upstairs in the park? And we've looked at, several months ago, Barry and I and Will met about, and I'm not saying this for anybody throws this out there, I'm just trying to figure out what's going to be our best to run for our money. And maybe if the chamber moved to the square where there's empty space and we still fund them, or maybe even fund them a little bit more to help offset their rent. And, you know, another one of our departments moved into the chamber, you know, we shuffled some people around in the space that we already own and utilize and pay utilities on, and...
That's right where I was going to go.
Okay, well, very good.
The chamber in town would be better for them, I think.
And, and in the past, in the past, the chamber has actually been on the square, they used to be on the south side of the square in the Howard and Lawson building that was owned. You know, and I, I don't, what year did we come over here?
They were actually on the north side at one point, too, because
Oh, correct, yeah.
The awning still has their logo on it.
He does, that's right.
Which our code enforcement has taken note of.
And then what year did they come into the town hall?
Time it was built.
Twenty-ten, when we moved in here, they moved in here with us.
Yeah.
I know the shares are rebuilding that, that's the yoga place, be a nice, clean place, ready for that. Anyways, I'm for that, and I think it would be good for the council, or the chamber.
So that's things to look at. I mean, you know, once you guys give us direction on how you want to proceed, and, you know, do we increase their funding, which comes out of the edit fund, to help offset that, or do we give them the same amount of funding and...
I understand. So, that's a good idea. Hey, it's getting time that maybe we should take a break now?
Okay.
For about ten minutes, if we're all back before then, we'll start again, but yes, go ahead.
Actually, a really good idea, Andy, if you want to research this, and again, I wouldn't take one that's been through like Katrina, but they do have FEMA trailers that, I mean, they're literally giving those things away. So it may not be something, yeah, you gotta go get it, but it might be something to look at, so.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think I've seen lots of gobs of trailers, nothing in them. Okay, we, uh, take a break? We're back in ten minutes.
You take ten.
Well, I don't want that.
You do two.
I'll come to the office.
Oh, it's your sunglasses in that light. I'm like, this, Craig's going through a midlife crisis, he's dyed his hair purple.
How many tardies can you get before you
So, yeah, we'll talk.
Have out school, out-of-school suspension?
It might be something that you and I could have lunch next week.
That's up to you guys, I'm not allowed to distribute those except to those people.
Exactly, exactly.
You have to make food next time.
All right, meeting's back open? Jenny?
Okay, so, along the host line, one thing that, that you kind of touched on, Tom, and I want to revisit, is us forecasting the next three years and our goals. And one thing that, that keeps coming up is the purchase of different property within town. And you can see, you know, our cash balances that we currently have. I would like for you guys to prioritize what direction you want to go. Do we want to develop the park more? Do we want to focus on public works? Because we can't do everything. And so, I'm asking you guys to prioritize what you want to see, and it'll be better next week when each department head is before you presenting their budget and their requests. But like tonight, Andy has requested, if you guys, I know, Tom, you've been down there a lot, I don't know if anybody else has been down the public works facility, it, it needs help, massive help. And Andy's got great ideas, and, and we do need another bay, and we need different things, wastewater as well, and the water departments, you know. We're, we're growing by leaps and bounds, and there is buildings that need renovated or different places purchased, and, and we have other ideas, and I'm not, you know, disagreeing with anything. When, when we talk, I just need to know what direction we're going to go, because we can't do everything. And my next concern, and, and I, Will and I have talked, Andy and I have talked, is, is if we go in, in the direction of expanding our park, for, for whatever reason, and say that someone gives us land, then I'm charged with the task of can we maintain it? Do we have staff to maintain it? Can we buy the chemicals and products that we're going to need? You know, it's just not, okay, well, this is fantastic, we've got a piece of land, it's like that beautiful Blanton house out there, you know, look how much it cost us to maintain it, but the Blantons were kind enough to gift it to us. And so, when we start talking in that direction of expanding all of our facilities within the town, of can we maintain it even if it's gifted to us? And there's a lot that goes into that, I mean, you all are very intelligent and you know that, but I just need you guys to prioritize. Are we going to focus on public works? Are we going to focus on the park? Are we going to focus on the other departments? Now, utilities are totally separate, but we can't bond for everything, because as I continually say, we hit circuit breakers, we hit tax caps, we're already offsetting those with the host fund, and we can't get away from that. In your binders, I've included all the bond information, when payments are due, when they're paid off. We can, of course, rebond at that time, but something that Dr. Schaefer and I met last week, that he's heading up, is that we're going to try to bond separately than when the school bonds and the library bonds and center township bonds, because that all is coming from the same pot, and it's all hitting the circuit breakers. And we haven't done a good job in the past, and it's really, really hard, because they're in the same boat we are, they're adding on to the school, you know, we're all expanding in the library, and, but it just all comes from the same bucket, and we're all being affected by circuit breakers. So, I just need for you guys to prioritize on what we're going to do. It came to my attention just two weeks ago that this house that's adjacent to the parking lot out here at the town hall, the two-story white house that's between the cleaners, H&R Block and us
That sits up on the hill.
Yes, that may be coming for sale. They've reached out as a possibility, would we want to purchase that? The redevelopment committee's doing a lot of things in, in their area, and tipping as well, and, and really going to revamp that area in the next year, and they've got a lot of great ideas and funding sources, because they, they truly sit on their own. And so, that may be a possibility to buy that, and, but we discussed, you know, you couldn't put public works there, of course, you know, and how we could utilize that, but could we remodel that house and have more of our offices there and expanding? Because we need to do something with the administration fire department, it's also, you know, it costs us a lot in utilities a month, just to heat, cool, all of the electricity needs that are, because it needs, you know, an updated roof, it needs updated flooring, and, I mean, Mark could speak on that a lot more. And then the last thing that I'll say is, again, we've been gifted land on the Miles property from D.R. Horton, but how are we going to build a fire station? And partnering with center township? I mean, these ideas are thrown out, and it's grandiose, and I, I love them all, I, I live and breathe and am raising my family and grew up here, and I, I see the need, but, again, you guys are tasked with the responsibility of being fiscally responsible and how we're going to meet all the needs. So that's the last thing that I have to say to do with the host fund.
I have a couple, then I have a couple of comments on host. So, I mean, you indicated that the host fund was there for some of the one-offs things for us to take care of, but this account has been plagued with reoccurring items. And as these priority projects come into place, we have, you know, we have a need for those items, but then that turns this account negative. I remember during the process of, of asking to have some additional monies put to the future, uh, uh, future host fund, that you were a little bit standoffish on that, and I can now see, you know, possibly why. I, I understand that maybe at that time, this data wasn't available, but it would have still been good information to have, you know, at this, at that time. So, I guess a couple of questions, as I have, that pertains to this, we got a hundred thousand dollars that comes out for park bonds, and then a hundred and two thousand that comes out for a Series A Bonds Police Department.
Mm-hmm.
So, looking at the bonds in our folder So looking at the bonds in our folder here, so the Sorry. So this one right here would be the parks bond for 2 million.
Correct.
And it appears that every payment is both a reduction of principal and interest.
Correct.
So as of right now, the outstanding principal would be 1,267,000. And then 100,000 then is a function of the principal and the interest? I don't think those add up because that actually adds up to 83,000. So where's the other 15 or so going?
So we have the principal balance. And then we have the principal payment that we're paying and we're paying interest. So if you look here, we'll just go to the top line of July 1st. The principal that we are paying is $40,000. The interest that we're paying is $30,360. That is our payment, the $70,360. So we're paying on principal and interest both, like you said.
So why do we have a line item of 100,000 for transferred to park bonds?
Because we make two payments a year. So we actually pay $146,000 to the bond for this is just the park bond alone.
Okay.
And then we have our GEO bond because all of this is paid from property taxes. So we have our park bond, our GEO bond, and our public works communication bond. So when you add the park bond, so I'm going to go down here to January 2022. Our payment next year is $166,000 for the park bond.
100 comes from host and 66 comes from property taxes.
Yes, but then you also need to see that the GEO bonds, which is the police department cars, our payment there is $150,000 next year. So you add those, you add that. Then if you go to our
Okay, hold on, hold on. So this one is the
Police cars that we just purchased. This is the GEO bond that was approved and Old National Bank is the GEO bond.
So 945 under host says transferred to Series A Bonds PD. This is a Series B bond. What?
That is the communication bond. The Series A is the GEO bond.
Okay, so where is that in here?
Right here. It's, this is the very first page that says First Financial. So if you see, we make a payment of $76,000 in January. Then we make a payment of $76,000 in July.
Okay.
And then you add in the Series B Public Works Communication Bond and the park bond. And we do not receive enough property tax revenue to be able to pay those along with salary and wages and everything that comes out of the general fund. Are you following me?
I am, I am. I guess I'm just trying to hear real quick. So outstanding debt on communications is 439,000?
Yes, correct.
Plus another, call it 1.3 million for parks?
Correct.
So 1.7.
And then this was taken out for 455,000. We've made one payment of 78,000.
Okay. And is that, and is that the only other debt that comes out of host?
Yes.
Just those?
Yes. So when you look at your total general fund, if we go back to this very first page that I was presented tonight in the non-departmental, all of these things come out of general property tax. So all of our general expenses, which is utilities, salary and wages, the biggest expenses that the town has comes out of the general fund along with these bonds. So we offset those payments to keep, for the residents of this town, to keep their property taxes down. So if you flip, I'm trying to explain it as best as I can. When you receive your property tax bill for Danville and you flip it on the back, it breaks down. So so much is going to the park fund. So much is going to the bond payments. So much is going to the general property taxes. And then so much goes to the library. So much goes to center township, depending on which township you live in, Center Marion Township. All of the property tax payments that you make as a resident in this town is divided into all of those buckets. And so we offset from the host fund to help keep the property taxes down and to be able to utilize those funds and these other aspects that are on the expenditure report. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
I mean, I do it every day. So it's hard to, you know, relay and explain to you guys.
I have a question. If the dump goes away tomorrow, based on this, we're hosed, right?
We're not hosed because we have planned for the future and we have the host future fund. But eventually, we will be hosed.
So what's the
We will have to find funding from other sources.
And assuming there are no other sources like that, what's the best way to increase those funds?
So doing what we're doing, annexing, you know, increasing our tax base.
The property taxes.
Exactly.
New homes?
Exactly.
New businesses?
Exactly. Doing what we're doing. That's, I mean, if you're not growing, you're failing. You're shrinking, right? I mean, everybody's growing around us. And that is the only way is what we're doing.
I have to say that louder.
Say that during a council meeting.
One of my asks of Jenny was for the financial advisor to run a, what was it? A three or a five-year projection as to what future incomes could look like. And I think that they were going to do a little work on that.
So I reached out to them yesterday to ask them for a quote on how much it would cost for us to do something like that. Depending on that dollar amount, if I have sufficient funds in my budget, I'll go ahead and okay that. I think it's definitely something that we need to do. It's something that they do for other communities. And they kind of do that with Lisa when we're looking at the fiscal plans on the annexations and what O.W. Crone does. That's part of, you know, the fiscal plan. But to get the overall picture of everything, it would be good to do a financial analysis from a CPA firm. So I have reached out to receive quotes from the three that we used. But I mean, we're probably six months from getting that information. But it'll be good to have once we get it. We got to start somewhere. And, I mean, I really feel like you guys have done a really good job with what we have to work with. And four years ago, I don't even know whose idea it was. It doesn't matter whose idea it was. But we moved to the park, having their own fund and having their own tax basis, which has been really resourceful. I mean, wouldn't you agree, Will? And Will's trying to take more off of the general with his, you know, fund. And we are in the process of doing the same thing. We're looking at if it would be beneficial to have a fire territory and move forward in that direction. So I feel like we're doing a really good job of being fiscally responsible and looking for ways that we can receive more revenue. It just takes a long time. I always say, you know, we're trying to turn a cruise ship. It's not going to happen overnight. It's probably not even going to happen in a year. But it took Will and I and the previous management team, guys probably a year, to move to the park fund. But now, four years later, you know, it's beneficial and it's very resourceful in what Will has done with the non-reverting fund. And Andy, I don't want to take away from his presentation next week, but he has some great ideas on developing a non-reverting fund for public works. And with his knowledge and expertise and experience in his previous life, you know, some things that they did, it was a different state. So, you know, not everything that we can do. But he has some great ideas. So, I mean, we're trying. It's just going to take a while. And I mean, I keep saying this, but we just have to prioritize and decide what direction we want to go. And, you know, if we try to do everything at once, we're all going to get overwhelmed and nothing's going to get done. So if we could just focus and I just think, I, the department heads forecast every year as part of this process of their three-year goals. And they've been doing that. And I always tell them, you know, we can't fund these host requests. They know we can't. I know we can't. You know we can't. But I think it's important to show is, as we go back, this information is always available, Slazer Fish, this permanent public record, to show that they did make these requests, to show, well, Jim with the police department's been asking for additional patrolmen for 10 years and he's never been able to receive it. He's been asking for, you know, this type of equipment, the same for public works. I told Andy, especially since he's brand new, I said, you know, ask for it. It shows that you've needed it. And then we can prioritize based on the needs and how long the needs have been. And makes sense. So what questions do you guys have for me? That's everything I have for tonight. I know it's a lot. And this is so hard. And I want to apologize because you guys are all new. And it's, I've been doing this, you know, for a while now. And Mark and Will, you know, we have a lot of new department heads. And it's hard for me to educate you guys. And what do I concentrate on? What do I not? I try my best. And, I mean, everybody, you know, we work together to get your answers to your questions as quickly as we can. And I think that that's probably the best thing, you know. And I try to share those questions with you guys just in case you were thinking, well, because Grace's questions yesterday were really helpful. And I, too, have fault, which it's never going to happen again. I share too much information and it becomes overwhelming, I know. So I'm trying to slow my roll, as my staff tells me every day, and just slow down, give you pieces of the pie instead of giving you the whole pie and just know that we're moving forward, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jenny.
We're done? Any motions?
Hold on, sorry. So between, I'll say now and the next meeting, what would you like from us? I mean, you asked for a couple of things.
Sure.
Can you articulate those or circle back around to what that ask is?
Yeah.
Because also, I guess my second question then is, is if we each have individual thoughts and directions of which we want to go, how would you prefer that we get those to you?
Very good question. So we really need to concentrate on salary and wages. And, you know, I offered up some suggestions tonight. So I would like you guys to be thinking about studying everything that I've given you on, do you want to go to tasking each department head with, okay, we're going to give you X amount of dollars. It's your responsibility to evaluate your employees and give them raises based upon that. Or if you want to do straight across board raises, again, I provided you guys with that information. If you want to give more than 3% raises, I'm happy to calculate that out. Brenda does all of that for me. She does a great job. So I guess just as things come up, and I mean, I know we all can't talk together, but if you'll individually contact me, email me, do exactly what you all have been doing the last month. And I will do my best to share it with everybody so that the question's been asked, you have the answer, and then we move forward. I don't know, that was going to be one of my questions when I do my rap on the council meeting, is how you want the next five work studies, well, it's really four works, unless we add more work studies in September, what you want me to focus on within each individual work study? And I know, I think Mark's got some things that he needs to bring up in September as well. So I guess, you know, at the next, we meet next week for a long time. And it's just focused on this and the work studies. So if you could be thinking the next week, how often do you guys want to meet in September? Because the timeline is the very first thing in this binder, which you guys have had since June. You know, you can see the timeline and when decisions have to be made and when I have to have everything in the gateway. And I can always estimate high and, you know, if we don't go, which is what we did last year, if you'll recall, with raises. We estimated high with the anticipation that maybe the employees wouldn't get that much because we pass our salary ordinance at a later date. But having said that, this year, I really want to pass the salary ordinance at the end of October. It just keeps everything clean. If we're passing our salary ordinance with our budget, it just keeps everything clean just in case, you know, minds would be changed when it was presented in December. It just, it helps because my numbers and gateway match up with my accounting software and for bank reconciliations, it just keeps everything clean.
Thank you, Jenny, for a good presentation. And motion to close.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's closed. See you at 7 o'clock. Thank you very